Mayor Roland Dyke.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Present.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Present.
Alderman Mike Hansel. Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Present.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Stinchcomb.
Here.
Alderman Hansel sends his regrets he couldn't be here tonight, and he does send his regrets. Item three is approval of minutes of previous meeting that have been included in your packet. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion has been presented and promptly seconded. Are there any questions to the motion? Hearing none, please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item four is proclamations and a recognition of citizens by the mayor, of which I do have one today. And if Ms. Robinson would come forward and would present this proclamation. This proclamation is for Older Americans Month 2022. Whereas the city of Newport, Tennessee includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas the need of comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families places for our community are a critical responsibility, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. Whereas the city of Newport, Tennessee recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans to live, thrive, and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas the city of Newport, Tennessee can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Roland Dyke III, and the city of Newport, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month, and urge our citizens, urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they live in their communities. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Newport, Tennessee, on the day of May 2022. And being one of those older Americans, I hope you guys take heed of this. Thanks, older Americans. I'm not the only older American that appeared up.
I'm not going to comment.
I'm older now, so don't have to comment.
Well, that's what I was going to comment on.
Okay. Item five is communications for my city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. About a week and a half ago, we had another sinkhole open up on Iris Street, about halfway down from the hospital towards the Broadway. And as I normally do, I declared an emergency and contracted Brockle Construction to repair it. And it has since been repaired, and the bill was $8,250, which is cheap. The last one's about $32,000, the one last year. So I was tickled with the price that that one ended up being, but that's a pretty quick turnaround for another sinkhole in that area. Normally, we have one about every three to five years. And so that's two in basically six months, or six to eight months, that's two up there. So I hope that that's not going to turn into a trend where that's speeding up. The process is, so we'll just have to see. But I was really surprised when they called me over the weekend, that weekend, the weekend before last, and told me that we had a new one up there because it had been just a few months since the last one. So that's the quickest I've seen another one appear after having a prior one. We're going to start back on the 21st of this month with our litter pickup. As you all know, y'all approved us doing that last year. It worked out real well, had a lot of good positive comments about it from the public about how much cleaner the town was looking. And so on the 21st of this month, we're going to start that back up. And that's a Saturday, that's the week from this coming Saturday. And so we'll be doing a pickup, and we'll report back on that next month. On the White Oak Park project, update on that, at the last meeting, y'all gave me permission to pursue the properties up there, to expand the park. I have come to an agreement on one piece of property on the corner of Holly and Prospect. And the other piece that is on White Oak that joins the existing park, we're still far apart. They initially asked $70,000 for it, and I told them I couldn't get near that, and they have come down to 60 and said that's basically their final offer. And I'm not close to that number either. So I don't know. That's something for you guys maybe to think about and give me some feedback on and see what you all think about that proposition.
That's one of the halves of the town, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
It wouldn't leave work.
I mean, we got the other two lots for 31,000 combined. And I offered them, I went up to 41 on that one. I've offered them 41. And they started at 70, and I told them there's no way. And they said their final, basically their final offer is 60. So I passed on it, but I mean, I'm thinking about possibly getting a realtor to look at it and see what they think. There's another piece of property down the street that they're asking an ungodly amount for, so I think that may have played a role in this.
You'll have to tie the half down.
Yes, sir. Right. I told them, you know, when I met with them, they live in Florida, the owners do, and they came in to visit family and came by and met with me. And I told them, you know, which the house, I've not seen the inside, the outside's not in bad condition, but it's not in great condition either. The property's junked up pretty bad in the back. But, you know, the lot is all I'm buying. You know, I'm not buying a house. I mean, to me, the house is a burden because I have to tie it down. And I get, you know, that the value is what it is to them, I get that. But, you know, to give a big amount for a small piece of property, I just have, even though it's grant money, it's still taxpayer money. And I don't feel comfortable paying a big price for just a little tiny sliver of land, even though it kind of throws everything out of whack, but we can still work around it. So I told them I had an alternative plan, that it wasn't a do or die thing that I have it. And so we'll see. But y'all can think about it, and if y'all think that I need to offer more, I'll be more than glad to listen to what y'all think about it. On the Woodland Park, Gary has been talking to the guy that owns the trailer park over there, and he's really not wanting to sell the one portion. There's two lots there, the one's the front lot that the trailer's set on, and then there's a back lot that winds around and then comes down to the road. And we're trying just to buy that, just to get a right of way. And so he's supposed to get back to us, that he was open to selling that, but he hadn't give us a number, and we hadn't made him an offer. He was off the wall with the other portion, there's like four or five maybe trailer spots in there, and he wanted 40,000 apiece for them.
Wow.
For trailer spots. And if there's five of them, that's, you know, that's $200,000 for five trailer spots. So, you know, that ain't happening, so.
Because you got a right of way out to the other part anyway, you have to have it.
Yeah. Well, but I mean, if push comes to shove, we'll look at pushing the, because I need to tie it into the existing city park, and that's the only way I've got to do it. But now, he's open to selling the other lot, and it touches the road, and it'll work if he don't try to ask that kind of number for it. He shouldn't because it's of no value to him whatsoever, he's right on the side of a hill, and it's not developable. I mean, not without spending a ton of money with somebody with a track hoe in there trying to dig it out and make it into something they could use. So we'll see, but that's kind of where we are right now on all that. I have signed the paperwork on purchasing the property, and we are looking, we're waiting on the survey to come back. We're going to put boundary markers around the, once it's surveyed, around the edge of the property, marking the boundaries so folks will know when they're on the city park property. And we'll move forward from there, and I'll keep you all informed on that. Finally, there, inside your notebook, there is a letter there from the comptroller's office, and I'm going to let Tina explain that to you.
Well, the audit, of course, for fiscal year '21 is not complete yet. We were waiting, or the auditors were waiting for information from Newport Utilities, and they did get that a few months later than what they needed, I think around maybe February or March, I'm not sure. But the timeframe that they got it was right when they start doing their tax season. So that's the two things, they're not here, so I can say it, but that's the two things that they do, is taxes and audits. And they don't usually happen at the same time. So once you get into full swing of tax season, they had to let audits go, they've got to get their tax for their other clients out. So they had to set it aside, but originally, we just didn't have the information to do it. We will have Frank, if everything else works out okay, and if nothing else comes up, Frank will be here with Haley at the next meeting, and at that time, he can present the audit for fiscal year '21, and then we can look at the audit contract for fiscal year '22, which is coming up, and go over. Now, this letter from the comptroller, they will not approve the fiscal year '22 budget until they have the fiscal year '21 audit. So the second reading of next year's budget is also in June. So when that budget is approved, if it is, even though it would normally start on July 1, until the comptroller gives us approval and accepts our audit, it will not go into effect, and we will have a continuance of this year's, or fiscal year '22 audit, or budget. And that is not something that honestly we can control at this point. Have any questions about anything that was in the letter?
You will respond to the comptroller?
Yes, I will.
I'm too happy about that one, but.
I don't know that, at this point, we need any response other than turning it. It was more of an informational to us. This is what you need to be doing. But that really was not something that we could control, at least for this year. I'm not sure where Newport Utilities stand for fiscal year '22. I don't know if they're at a point in time where they'll be able to finish on a more normal schedule like they had, you know, prior, or not. I have not heard anything on that either.
Okay. Any questions?
Appreciate your job, Tina.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, which we apparently don't have anything on the agenda. Item seven, reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Does any member of council have anything they'd like to add at this time? We'll move on. Item eight, old business or unfinished business. So item A is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2022-07, amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title 8, alcoholic beverages, Chapter 4, permits, Section 8-401, permit required for engaging in beer business, privilege tax. We don't want to get into the captioning.
That is the caption, so that will suffice.
Okay. All right. Any questions? All right, we need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board, it's been properly seconded. We would need a roll call for this one, Tina.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine is new business, consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-08, Budget Amendment, City of Newport.
Mayor, this is the final budget amendment for this fiscal year. As everybody's aware, throughout the year, we have to do multiple amendments to keep everything on paper, squared away, again, for the audit and the comptroller's office, just to make sure that everything's in the right line. We always have to move monies around from one line to another, when one runs a little over and one's got a little extra in. And so this is the final addition for this fiscal year.
And Mayor, I'll read the full caption. It's ordinance number 2022-08, ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2021-2022.
Okay. Heard the reading of the ordinance, what is the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the board. It's been properly seconded for consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-08, Budget Amendment, City of Newport. It has been properly seconded, we need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-09, Budget Amendment, Newport Grammar School.
Mayor, if I understand this correctly, it's a little confusing for me, and I may have to rely on Tina again, but my understanding is this is a rehash of their prior budget amendment, that when it was turned into us and passed and then sent into the comptroller, they had gotten their numbers on their line items out of whack. And so the comptroller caught it and sent it back to be amended and then resubmitted. So they have corrected that mistake on their part, have the correct line item numbers now in place, but it will have to be approved again with the numbers in the right place so it can be resubmitted to the comptroller's office.
This will continue to be just the first reading, then?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2022-09, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2021-2022 for Newport Grammar School.
Okay. Board, you've heard the presentation of the ordinance. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then, and it's been properly seconded for consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-09, Budget Amendment, Newport Grammar School. Roll call, please.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C is consideration of the first reading of ordinance number 2022-10, Budget for the City of Newport, fiscal year 2022-23.
And Mayor, this, of course, this is the operating budget for next fiscal year. Hopefully, we will definitely have it approved on time. Hopefully, if everything gets into the comptroller on the audit, they will approve it to go into effect July 1. If not, as Tina mentioned, we will operate under the same budget until that time that the comptroller will allow us to begin under the other. But any new spending that would be included in the new budget will not be, will not take place until the comptroller has approved the budget. The big thing in there, we do have a 5% raise for July 1 for cost of living for employees. If the budget gets held up, that will not go into effect on July 1, but when it does go into effect, it will be retroactive back until July 1. So they won't lose anything, they just may not get it when they would have normally gotten it. They'll get it in a lump sum when it's approved by the state. But hopefully, there won't be an interruption there, and we can get everything in on time. But if so, in case anybody doesn't get a raise on July 1, and they come to y'all saying, why didn't I get a raise, that'll be why. But they will get their money in a lump sum once the state lets it go.
Mayor, that's ordinance 2022-10, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport, and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2023.
You've heard the reading of the ordinance, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board, it's been properly seconded for consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2022-10, Budget for the City of Newport, fiscal year 2022-2023. Roll call, please.
Alderman Connie Ball.
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Odinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item D is consideration of Resolution Number 2022-05, authorizing the city of Newport to change the name of an inactive bank account at Newport Federal Bank to receive credit and debit card payments on court tickets.
And as y'all have done many times in the past, this is just a housekeeping issue where that all bank accounts have to be either created, or their names changed, or anything pertaining to them has to be done by the board. And so we need to create an account just for the credit cards, and so there was an inactive account, and instead of trying to open a new account, it's simpler just to rename that account and utilize it for those. So that would be our request.
Heard the reading of the resolution, what is the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to accept that. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the consideration of Resolution Number 2022-05, authorizing the city of Newport to change the name of an inactive bank account at Newport Federal Bank to receive credit and debit card payments on court tickets. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item E is consideration of Resolution Number 2022-06, calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Newport by owner consent and approving a plan of service, highway 73.
The owners of the property that is the ConAgra Distribution Center, which is, I think, total of four parcels, have requested those parcels be annexed into city limits. We've had a brief meeting with the department heads about services that would need to be provided. We kind of all agreed that everything they would need is already in place, possibly a couple of streetlights would be the most we would have to do. So cost-benefit analysis sort of paid out, we're not putting a whole lot of money into something where we'd be getting the value back. They want city services, and this is the first step in the glorious annexation process. So I'll be up here every month for the next three months as we go through this. This ordinance, or resolution, excuse me, creates the public hearing, which will be held next month before the meeting, and approves the plan of service, which is attached to the resolution.
Okay. Questions? Okay, you've heard the reading of the resolution, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the consideration of Resolution Number 2022-06, calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Newport by owner consent and approving a plan of service on highway 73. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Phoenix Investments?
Yeah.
Business investors.
Is it anything to do with Phoenix closures?
No.
Completely different.
Well, people are getting mixed up, a lot of times are getting that mixed up a little bit.
Yeah, I have to check myself when I say it because I'm afraid I've called it Phoenix, Phoenix closures, but.
I guess, and how can another company buy this?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we did vote on that, okay. Item F is consideration of Resolution Number 2022-07, calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Newport by owner consent and approving a plan of service, Rankin Road, Woodland Park property.
Same song and dance, since we're the owners, we will request annexation into the city limits, and there shouldn't be any opposition since we're the owners. But again, you got to jump through the hoops, so.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the resolution, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve consideration of Resolution Number 2022-07, calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Newport by owner consent and approving a plan of service, Rankin Road, Woodland Park property. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Give everyone a quick question. What's going on with ConAgra now? Is anybody bothering or?
Oh, the main campus?
Yes.
I don't know what I can say.
I'll be back. So right now, I mean, there are still, has been and will remain several active prospects for both sites. Right now, they're trying to separate the remnants on both the Broadway campus and highway 73. There's been a couple of issues come up on 73, projects with the existing tenants in there, get around. One reason why we're going through the process, but hopefully we can help expedite their departure here pretty soon so we get a new tenant that is going to go in there ASAP. Hopefully, we'll be able to make that announcement here pretty soon. There are two active prospects, looking at the Broadway campus now, so if they get off of, that's one reason why the company was trying to be invested in the matter tonight. They were just busy getting the last remaining poles and boxes and whatnot out of the building, so hopefully they can take the proceeds or go ahead and get that company moving.
Do you feel good about it, what's going on? I mean, do you feel that?
I'm very pleased with the amount of interest we've had. And that's the only reason that their ventilation is so hard, making it possible, they can kind of get ConAgra's last remnants gone, so.
Is that what they tore down back there, part of behind the?
No, well, I mean, they've got logged in, housekeeping out.
Oh, like their machinery on the inside is mostly what they're getting, yeah.
Yeah, machinery on the inside, it's, they still got some old stuff that they'll buy and auction, or one or two, and they're kind of get out there and just get jumped. And they're going to do quite a bit of maintenance, and I guess, you know, just clean up the floor, redoing a couple of spots.
If we're putting that much money in, you feel like you're going to lose some weight?
with it then, don't you?
They're going to, you know.
People ask a lot, "Oh, damn."
Yeah, I wish we, you know, that stuff happens, but we're not, and fortunately, there's nothing that happens quickly in our world. But those, there's been over 10 visitors that may have burned off on that building, so.
Yeah, the distribution site was the, that was the pretty lady at the dance. Everybody's wanted that one. The big campus is tougher to.
Big campus is tougher, so.
Yeah.
73 is a comparison. They have, so far, they've said for highway 73, that's just the center, so hard to find. In fact, it's not likely to reach, however, just off the island of East Tennessee now. So, ton of it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Gary. Item G is consideration of annual state highway contract between the Tennessee Department of Transportation and the City of Newport.
Mayor, since around 1993, the City of Newport has entered into an annual maintenance contract with the State of Tennessee for all the state highways inside the city limits, and each year that contract has to be renewed by the board. And so this is just the continuation of that process that's, that's been going on for almost 30 years.
Okay. Heard the presentation, heard the reading of it. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the board to approve consideration of annual state highway contract between Tennessee Department of Transportation and the City of Newport. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nays, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Item H is consideration of hiring a firefighter for the Newport Fire Department.
Yes, Mayor, we've, we've had an open at the fire department, and for the last three weeks, we've been doing our written test, our physical test, and our interviews, and we've come up with, the civil services came up with and decided that Stephen Payne is the top candidate for that, and we're requesting that you guys approve his, his hiring. He's actually in the.
Is that Mr. Payne here?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to come forward? Let us see who we're hiring.
I know him personally, he's a good guy. Good fan.
All right. We have.
Stephen has already been through our rookie school, so he's, he's pretty much truck-ready. We still got to get him in, he'll have to be a couple of week class, but he, he's ready to go when we're approved.
Are you a local fella?
Yeah.
Yep.
There are you. I'm not worried, can't go home. I didn't know we were.
All right. All right, you've heard the consideration of hiring a firefighter for Newport Fire Department. What is the board's pleasure?
I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to second.
We have a motion on the board then for consideration of hiring a firefighter for Newport Fire Department. What was your first name?
Stephen.
Stephen Payne. Mr. Stephen Payne, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And any nays, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Item 10 is bids, purchases, and expenses. Item A is consideration of bids for a used tractor for Parks and Recreation.
Yes, sir. We, we did some exploring and looking and found us a Kubota MX 5100. Has 61 hours on it. We put a bid out what we could buy a, a 5100 tractor for. We have a hand-me-down from the street department that we got out of the junk pile that we put a hydraulic motor on, and now it's, it's met its time. It's due to be replaced. It's dead. So in the process of the bid, we were able to get a $2,000 trade-in. The bid came in at 15, minus the 2, so we're able to buy this tractor for $13,000.
Heard the presentation. What is the board's pleasure?
Make a motion, accept that bid then. I'll second.
We've seen this time to go. It's time.
Okay, heard the presentation. We have a bid, excuse me, a bid on the board, and it's been properly seconded for a used tractor in the amount of $13,000. Please signify your acceptance. Well, I think we need a roll call on this one, don't we?
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, have a consideration of bids for a pickup truck for the fire department.
I was in a different order than that. Yes, we're, we're looking to replace the, our 2005 Ford Expedition. That's our training vehicle. We're going to get a four-door pickup truck that we can put a bed, it's easy to haul gear and stuff in. And it will be, it's on a state bid for $34,000, just under $34,000.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve that purchase.
I'll second. Okay, we have motion on the board to approve the purchase of a pickup truck for the fire department in the amount of $34,000. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your, well, roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Item C is consideration of bids for flock cameras for police department.
That's what a flock camera is. Almost a mystery.
I make it short and sweet, it's a tag reader. But it's not just a tag reader like you see on patrol cars go around reading tags. These are stationary cameras, and there've been an amber alert, a silver alert for missing adult, bank robbery, anything's entered into NCIC, a stolen vehicle. If it passes that camera, we'll know it. We'll get a notification that it's in town. The detectives use this system in a couple of others towns to get information for our detectives. By buying this particular camera, we're able to have access to the greater Knoxville area, and one city in East Tennessee has 12 of these cameras, and they love them. And we've been able to utilize those, and we want to get ourselves to be part of it. The very thing that we love that sells this community, the interstate system, is the one thing that brings those people in here as well. And I use as example the, the young man that escaped in Alabama, came right through Tennessee. That car's tag's still been entered. When they passed that camera, they got off the 435 to get gas, we'd have known immediately. We'd have got a notification. So it's a fantastic tool. It is a tool. It's not a ticket rider. It don't cost anybody anything extra. If they drive by it, we'll take their picture, and if we don't use it, it's just fine and dandy, we'll get rid of it. But it is a fantastic system, and we would love to modernize and move forward with this purchase.
And the purchase, total purchase was, oh.
It's $10,000 plus installation. They own the equipment, so if it breaks, they can fix it. If something gets torn down, they can fix it.
So the $11,400 includes installation?
Installation, yes.
What is the board's pleasure? I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board then to approve the bid for flock cameras for police department in the amount of $11,400. It has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Chief, where will the cameras be installed?
We're not exactly sure where we're going to put them, because we're trying to negotiate with another agency in the county and try to maybe get them to purchase one. We're going to talk to one of the bigger box stores, who's going to try to get them to purchase one. Then we'll set them up based on that, but more particularly, the main ingress and egress for the city, so that way we can have those. And the good thing is, if you have a bank robbery and they say it's a blue Toyota truck, we can go right to flock, enter in a blue Toyota truck, and it'll pop out the one that done went by, and let us know if another one comes by.
What do you do with all the extra? You know, you said you'd take a picture of everything that comes in.
It belongs in the cloud, wherever it's at. I'm not sure where the cloud is, but it'll be in the cloud. It won't clutter up anything here.
So you'll be able to go back and retrieve data?
Yes.
If need be?
If we go, we can pull, and I don't know if y'all have seen the, the readers like that do the tickets. You get a picture, a picture, and a picture. And I had a buddy come to me one time, he said, "See, I was stopped at that red light." And I said, "Yeah, because every still shot, you are stopped." And I showed him the video, and he saw that he was actually in full motion as you're in the red light, so. We can, we can get pictures of those. We can put out, for example, I know, God forbid, we have a child abducted, we can say, "Last seen, the vehicle left here was a blue Ford Explorer." It'll start popping blue Ford Explorers. Everyone that comes by will know. It is, it's modern technology, a little bit scary, but it's modern technology and fantastic. Everything I've heard about is great.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
All right, consideration of bids for plumbing repair at the police department.
Do I get to give my plumbing lesson now? All I got to do is the first rule of plumbing. You all know what it is. It doesn't run uphill. Our plumbing antiquated, the building was built in 1800s, late 1800s. Our sewage goes down, and then it has to come up to get into the sewer system. And we've, we've had a couple of encounters with, one come out of slush, and the other one bubbled and splashed. So it's, it's just old connected, run together, needs to be cleared up and cleaned up, and we got one bid, we called another local company, didn't get a return call from them. This bid is, also includes electrical to put in a pump, so we actually get a, instead of trying to do gravity flow uphill, we'll have a pump to take this in and then pump it back into the sewer system.
What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion on the board then to approve the bid for plumbing repairs to police department in the amount of $12,000.
Yes, ma'am.
It has been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderman Connie Ball?
Yes.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much. I know every member of our agency and all our visitors will be very thankful.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Item 11 is comments from citizens. Anyone that wished to be heard today. If not, hearing none, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Like the motion.
Second.
We are adjourned.